Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start the work session. The first item on our work session is just to do a review of, actually, the first item is for Economic Development Consultant Professional Services. We'll wait for Jimmy to get here, if that's okay. And then we'll start with the budget. Pray more. Giovanna Neal.
Hi, I'm Giovanna Neal, Accounting Director here at the Township. And I would like to present an overview of the budget, basically, how we come up with some numbers and where they're at. Is that too loud?
No, if it's, it was perfect. So bring it back to you.
Bring it back a little?
Yeah.
All right. We're good?
Perfect. I can't hear.
You can't hear me?
It's not you.
Oh, okay. All right. And the first slide is just where we can get the budget off of our Township website. It has our address for our residents if they would like to see where it's at. They can go pick that up. The items I'd like to go over today would be the tax revenue, our state shared revenue, pension, and our OPEB, which is our healthcare retiree section. Also, some basic expenditure assumptions and the debt funds. First off, I'd like to go over the, how we come up with taxable values. Well, those are all from the Assessing Department. I don't know how they do the market values and the taxable assessments, the taxable value assessments, but we do have to turn those in to the state, usually in March is when they turn those in. And we do know that we have a 4.6% increase over last year's taxable values. So that is good for the Township. Also, our taxable revenues have increased 4.4%. Now, there's a difference to that because we do have to take into consideration how we come up with the funds that we have on our budget. So the revenue on the budget, we have to work with, I work with the Assessing Department. And we look to see if there's any Michigan tax tribunals, any judgments that would have to be going forward, also any loss assumptions for personal property taxes and foreclosures. So we look at all of these things as we're doing our budgets for the tax revenue, taxable revenue. So what are used on our budget for our taxable revenues? We used the taxable value of that $1,091,810, oh, I'm sorry, it's $1,091,810,189. It's the taxable value that we use to come up with the revenue lines that we have in each one of our funds for any of the levies that we have for the Township. What we do is, if there is a headly rollback, which there did happen to be one prior year, and there is one again this year, that is based on if the annual growth is higher, greater than the rate of inflation. So if the growth on the property is higher than the rate of inflation, then we get a headly rollback, and that's determined by the state. Also into consideration is something that they have, it's called the Essential Services Assessment. That is reimbursement from the state to compensate for any losses that we have for any personal property taxes. And what that means is they've, the state has done away with, not done away with, you have to actually apply each year to get an exemption if your personal property tax is $40,000 or below. You can, you know, apply to have that exempt. We do have some companies that get that. And we also have, the state also lets manufacturers who are eligible also be exempt from certain personal property taxes. We'll have a change in the budget revenues that you see that was distributed for the taxes, yeah, for the draft. There are gonna be some changes. There was a late exemption filed. The state did extend that from February to May. So we didn't have those numbers right at last, and that did make a difference. So that amount of the late filing, actually, went to the city of Ypsilanti. So that's kinda why it was a little bit later than what we would want it to be. So we did have to make some changes on those numbers. You'll see that when we actually bring the next draft back to you when we do the presentation on that. So the tax revenues will be different. We also expect to receive $12,000 back from the state for the essential services. That will go into the general fund. That is also not budgeted because we didn't have those numbers. We actually had a greater amount, and we were exempt from that essential services tax reimbursement. But after we had the exemption, and that put us in a place where we get $12,000.
Can I just say that the draft budget had 5.4% increase, and the revised number will be 4.4%?
So, the next page, I just wanted to show you the L-4029, which you already have approved. This has been approved. And the reason I wanted to show you this was the taxable value that's up at the top, $1,202 million. That number up there is different than the number I spouted off in the, on the other page that we actually-
Is that on the page?
Pardon me?
Is that in our packet?
Which?
She has a copy of the-
Yeah, it's page four.
Yep, mine too.
Oh. Oh, mine. I'm sorry, it is online.
But it is number four.
It is page, it is page four. That's-
Back to page three. One, two, three. I don't have it.
Oh, you do? What does this mean? Okay, the, the, the copier was acting a little funny, I thought. See if yours is missing. I gave you one. Are you missing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munch. Does it go from three to seven or not?
There's one by you too, Stan, right by ya. Does Heather's?
Oh, hers, yeah.
Hers might be different.
There was three of them that I copied beforehand, and then I tried to copy more afterward, and it jammed, so.
Okay.
Page 12 is different. The only thing is different is page 12. I apologize. But anyways, so I just wanna show you that, you know, this L-4029 has the taxable value on it, and that was filed, you know, like I said, with the Assessing Department. They filed that in March, but now that number is gonna be a little different.
And we actually vote on this as a board after, once we receive and verify the numbers from the Assessing Department.
Correct.
Um, sorry.
So just for clarity, what we're looking at right now, this is the 2017 tax rate request. The taxable value is going to change, so this will come back again?
No, it will not.
Oh, it will not? Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear.
No, it will not. Any revisions that they have, 'cause we've already, we've already filed the original back in March.
Okay.
Then they have, sometimes they have different, usually it's not a huge change when they make adjustments. And I'm saying by "they," anything that there were, if there was some order of review judgments in between that they would make, any MTT, you know, those would be in the computers, and it would be, oh.
The actual number for the L-4029 was $1,202,9639. That is what we voted on. But, what happens is you have your taxable value, but it's different than what your budget number is per millage, 'cause she takes into consideration MTTs, and which is tax tribunal cases, foreclosures-
Foreclosure.
-for property taxes. There's, there's a lot that you have to, when you're trying to do the budget, you can't just go by the taxable value, 'cause that's not what you're gonna actually come in as revenue. It does change, and there is adjustments throughout the year, and I've lost my link. Right, right. Yes.
Right, so, okay. So just for clarity, so right now, we would say the property is worth $1.2 billion.
Our, what it is, is our total taxable value is $1.2 billion.
Okay, thank you.
And one mil generated, you know, that's how you, so it's one per thousand, so-
We actually have those in the packet where you see how you do the calculations.
Okay, thank you.
So we do the L-4029 first.
Yes.
We get that from Assessing.
And that, and that has our levies of each one of our-
What we're gonna levy, the board votes on it.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, I think I have it now. Thank you.
Let me see if this is-
It is confusing.
Yeah, that's kinda why I wanted to kinda go over it, so if you have any questions, and we can tear it apart and look at it, and your stuff came up. Oh, my goodness. Okay. So does everybody have, so you guys don't have copies of page five, then? Okay, so page five, if you're all looking at, do you want me to go ahead? If everybody has it, I can go ahead. Yep, or do you want me to wait?
Are we good?
Yeah. All right. So great. So this, this page is actually the page that I use to come up with the numbers that we come up with for our taxable revenue. All right? And I, usually, there's a, there's a lot of spreadsheets involved with this. There is that loss assumptions spreadsheet that we do, and I also have Linda Goslin look at that, and Brian Nocleary. We all look at that together to see if we think there's gonna be, how much percentage of each one of the residential, or commercial, or industrial, how it's gonna change throughout the years. And what I have is, usually have three boxes. I have an optimistic, I have the expected, and I have a pessimistic. So what you see in front of you here is the expected, and that's the one that I use for the budget.
Presentation.
Okay. And I did make a different copy, 'cause this one kinda was blurry. So same numbers, just on a, on a different spreadsheet, and more Excel-based.
For the actual for 2017?
Yeah, so what I wanted to do was, the first, the first column is the actual numbers that we did receive for our settlement in 2017. So those are the numbers we did receive. All right? And you can see the total at the bottom is at $16, excuse me, $16,375,112. And the amount that we budgeted last year, budgeted, it came with $16,400, or, I'm sorry, So there's a difference of $36,456. So it wasn't off by a whole lot. And we did have, actually, some personal property, delinquent personal property taxes that I did not have in there for $21,000. So actually, the difference that we came up with is about $15,000 difference, which is, is, is pretty good. So those numbers, I'm pretty sure, add. You'll also notice the taxable value row. If you can see the actual for 2017 changed from the budgeted amount for the 2017. So the amount on the actual is actually was on the settlement that comes from the county. So that had any adjustments that they had for any of those MTTs, border reviews, any, any type of judgments like that. That's when it changes, and it's usually not a huge number. So you can kinda see a budgeted to actual and how it looks. The third column is our budgeted for 2018. Now, the tax roll is 2017. So your tax roll is 2017. It's revenues for the next year, which is 2018. So, and I always have to say that to myself to get the right numbers. But we-
So I know that, that's like a hard concept to get, like, you've done it forever, and you're still saying how you say it.
Yes, I still say-
The way I say it to myself, so I remember, is that what we levy, or what we collect in, well, it starts, what, December and goes through January, that's what we use to operate for all of 18. So the year, Christmas before, to January something, is it February's last day, right? February, yeah. But anyways, but the bills go out in December, right? So the bills that go out in December are based on that taxable value that she just went over, and whatever those millage rates are, and then that money starts coming in, and that's what we run on in 18. So it's always like, one year you collect, next year you run on it.
Okay, yeah, so that's, kinda wanted to go over that for you a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so you can see where I come up with, I have a taxable value of that 1.1, almost 1.2, but, 1.1. And then the forecast out. So I have forecasted out, I have 18th tax roll and 19th tax roll, which is our revenue for 19 and 20. And so, we feel they're very conservative. You know, we might have some more industries come, we hope, you know, with our ACM coming, that we'll have a bunch of different things. But, you know, for right now, it's a very conservative number that we use. And a percentage that, again, that's on one of the spreadsheets that we use to flow into this, and I guess that Linda Goslin and I both look at that and kind of try to give our best overall assumption on what those losses or gains would be. Does anybody have any questions on that? Does it? Okay.
Yes, I, okay. So you said the forecast is a conservative number. What is it based on?
It's based on, still, the loss assumptions. So we have, let's see, and it might be easier if I take you to page eight.
Okay.
So if we go to page eight, this is a report that the Assessing Department turns in. And this, this is the taxable values. This is what they, they turn in to the county and the state. And you can see how it's broken down into real property, and then real property is broken down into residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural. So when we're looking at what assumptions we're doing, we'll say, okay, do we think that we're gonna have a 2% growth here, a 10% loss here? You know, so we're, we're doing these spreadsheets on these assumptions based on the levels we think that that's gonna come in.
Okay.
So it's just a, there's no scientific method to it. You know, we're trying to give our best estimate, and we think that we might have this new business come in. You know, our residential properties are increasing, you know, but we can't increase them too much, so we don't put anything really above a 1% on those usually. But, so we're trying to be conservative in what we say we think is going to happen each year.
Okay.
They also, and I might be wrong, but my memory, like, let me just say it, and then you can tell me if I'm way off. Anyways, the assessors across, you know, and Linda here, but the assessors before, they work real close with the county assessor, or to see what the growth factor is, and based on a, and they kinda like have their own little club, where they kinda know what looks like commercials is gonna take a hit, or it looks like, and they kinda, you know, 'cause it's kinda like a state initiative that gets, trickles down to the state, to the counties and the counties. And so, and then, once you get all the information, it's still basically trying to make your best shot.
Exactly.
And that's why she said earlier, she caught it one thing, but I know the old CPA firm, David Williamson, that was here for a million years, it still is, Raina works for him. Anyways, he used to call it the good, the bad, and the ugly. He would make forecasts, three different forecasts.
Yeah, so we're doing the optimistic, the expected.
And then you look, yeah, and you look at all those and just try to figure out what they, it's a good, calculated, educated projection, not guess.
Yes, and we, and we make it, like I said, we try to do it conservative, 'cause we don't wanna, you know, overinflate that.
Giovanna, if she sent us to the county and it was overinflated, they would've corrected, wouldn't they?
No, this, no, 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 no. This is actual. This is her actual numbers. I'm talking about forecast.
Her budget.
Yes, Monica asked about forecast.
She's talking about those three numbers of the few numbers.
With the forecast numbers. So that's what we're talking about. These numbers are set. These are set in their system right now. These are, these are good numbers, these are set.
Okay, I think I get it. Okay, so, so basically, those numbers can be adjusted, right?
Exactly.
Based on, I guess you could say, results inside the future, you know?
Exactly.
Other assessors in the county, and what they, you know, predict, or something of that nature.
Economic turns.
Economic downturns. Okay, gotcha.
There's a lot that goes in, into the assumptions that we make.
And then what is it that comes out in March that we, we still don't have the losses? But in March is when you pretty much know.
March is when-
Equalization, is that when the equalization numbers from the state comes out?
March is when she actually has to have this one. By the end of March, this L-4022 has to be submitted. And then that's when the numbers are set. However, as I explained before, we had, the, the state had increased the, or extended the exemption period for manufacturers, so that's kinda what threw us off, you know, on the numbers, so we'll have to, we have to adjust those. So you'll see that in the next draft that we present to you. Also, very interesting, while we're on page eight, the count is the parcels. So if you wanted to know how many parcels we had of personal property, or real property, personal property, those are, those are the numbers right there. You know what, since we're on here, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the next page, which is the special. Those are the IFTs. So those are different. We usually collect, we usually, we collect half of that. So the numbers that, that we give you on that, on that you authorize, the L-4029, where you're authorizing all the tax levies, that 1.2 million, we, we have half of that. That's included. All right, so you see at the bottom where the darker colors, so it's the total real and total personal, so that's a flat-out number on the page one, or page eight. And then half of the 13 million is the 6 million. And then the amounts that I had to adjust after that late exemption, you'll see there, that's 7 million. And so the, the, now, what the adjusted taxable value is, the real number that, you know, that Linda would have in her system now, is that $1,194. That's not the number that I base my budget numbers off of. Mine was the, if we go back to the one, the first page, it's a 1.19. Let me get you that right there. So it's the fourth bullet down for the budget, taxable value. I use that $1,191. That's the one that we came up with after we took all of the assumptions.
What page is that on?
That's on page three.
Thank you.
That's the fourth bullet down, and that's the number that we use. And like I said, I, I work very closely with Linda on this. We do send it to our auditors. However, we did not send this one. You know, we've done what we've done for the last couple of years, and we've been close, and he feels confident that we have the right numbers, as long as Linda and I are both looking at them and making the conservative assumptions that we are making. Yes?
I had a quick question. It was like 555 total exempt, or what qualifies something to be exempt?
Those could be, again, I'm not the Assessing Department, but I believe those are, we have veterans that can be exempt. I think the majority of that is from veterans, disabled veterans. Other than that, we would have to get Linda here to answer more specific questions-
Okay.
-on her values.
Thank you.
Anybody got a napkin? Thank you.
Page six, excuse me. Page six is actually our levies, our millages that we have. You can see 2016 tax roll, which is 17, so we've already done that. That one had a headly rollback. The one for 17, the tax roll for 17, has a headly rollback. The number that you see up there, we did have new levies passed for the tax roll of So when we calculate, these numbers here was based on the, the full amount, and you multiply the headly rollback, and then that's how the number is calculated. And then for the forecast, I just use the number that we have already for the tax roll of 2017. We could have another headly rollback. Those numbers, after a headly rollback, you can't go back up. So the numbers can't go back up. So if you see, the first one's the fire operating, it's 3.0962 for 2017's tax roll, 2018 revenue. If you'll see my projected column, my forecast, it's the same number. It can't go back up to what it was. If we have a headly rollback, that'll go down even more. So you multiply the headly rollback by that, that millage, and that's what the next one would be. I kinda wanted to show you, just have overview what that was.
How long is the headly rollback in place? Is that?
Once, once it's on here, and we reduce that number, that millage, it's on there, until you get a new millage. You know, you voted for a new millage. But it will, it will decrease every year if you have one. Okay, any questions on that? All right. And then we just put a little page together to show you how to calculate the dollars, from taxable value, how much dollars that would be. And so the example I gave is the, actually, the taxable value that I had used in my budget, the total millage. If you combined all of our millages, that's what that total is, a 14.3398. You divide that amount then by 1,000, and so the amount of the expected budgeted funds that we would get for taxes is that $17,932. I just wanted to point out that our fire pension levy, it's a Public Act 235, that's in ongoing, that just-
In perpetuity.
Yes, thank you very much. And we have that levy at 1.2 mils. And that is to be used for the fire pension and fire healthcare, retiree healthcare, the OPEB. Also, part of the tax revenue is the administrative tax revenues. We get 1 point, or, I'm sorry, 1% of all collected dollars, except for special. So this last year, we collected $608,000. Then that has to be used only with the Treasury Department and the assessing expenditures. It has to be earmarked for that. You can't make any more than what their expenditures are. And we are well under that with the two departments.
It's like what they get paid for collecting the taxes for the other jurisdictions, the library, the ICSD, schools, that's state law.
Let's see. And I just put down here that we, we had an increase of 3.5 from 16 to 17, and were projected to have an increase of 3.5 from 17 to 18. So what I have projected for 2018 is $630,000. And then this is just that, that L-4022, which I thought was, I thought you might like to see how these are broken down. I thought that was pretty interesting. Then we move on to our next biggest revenue, which is our state shared revenues, and how we come up with those numbers. Well, we don't come up with those numbers, you know, just how it's separated, so that you know how it's separated. The revenue sharing that we expect is $4,832,932. That's an increase of 2.83%. And there's three ways that that's compiled. First one is the constitutional way, method, and then we have what's called the CVTRS, which is the City Village and Township Revenue Sharing. That's something new. It's taken the place of the statutory amount that they used to do. This is new. new. It's taken the place of the statutory amount that they used to do. This is new. There is, you have to actually do some things as a township, more city, in order to get that. And I'll explain that in a minute. There's also a new supplemental CVTRS this year. It's brand new, so that was new to me this year, too. So I've got the explanations on here. So the constitutional payments, they take the population, last census that we have is the 53,362 population, and they multiply it by the distribution rate. That distribution rate is given to us by the state. They do a calculation every two months on whatever it is that they collect that makes up the pot of money that they share with everyone. I have no control over that, so I'm just putting the numbers that they have. This is what they used. Also, the CVTRS is expected to be 467,136. They take that by the percentage that they had back in 2010, and they multiply it, again, by, by a factor. And again, the state comes up with these factors, so I'm, I put them out here for you. I don't make them up, so I'm not quite sure where they, where they're pulling them from.
Jo, if I could elaborate just a little bit. Thank God for constitutional, because they, they can't touch that, the constitutional portion of the state revenue. If they could, they would. So they have been messing around with the statutory amount, which is voted on by the legislation. And that's where they had, we used to get a lot more money from that, and now we're not.
Correct.
And they're trying to make up for taking away the personal property tax that we were collecting, which we always gave 50% of that anyway. You know, we always give a tax break for personal property if you're a large industry. And last year, we got more money than we did this year. So it's always moving. So for, it's really hard to do a budget per statutory, which is a half a million dollars. I mean, because it can change in a heartbeat.
They can decide not to give it to you if you do not comply with the requirements. So the requirements that we have to meet here at the township, we have to do a citizens' guide.
Dashboard.
Dashboard. It's a citizens' guide dashboard. You have to have your budget in place for two years, so you have to have, so what I would be required to do is the '17 and '18 would have to be in place. You also have to put all of your long-term debt, so you have to have a debt schedule, and you also have to have your pension schedule.
And OPEB.
And, and OPEB. So those schedules have to be on there. We do that. If you, if you've ever noticed on our website, we have the citizens' dashboard, dash guide. You can go to Unitrex. It has that information on there. It's a very good tool. You can also look at other townships and cities to see how we compare with those. So it's, it's a very good tool. I didn't bring-
What is the annual renewal for that software program?
It's $2,300 roughly.
So every community is required to have a dashboard, right?
Yes.
And most people have to purchase it from this company that provides the dashboard?
Yes. And, and again, it is a good tool if you use it, because you, there's comparatives. You can go see how everybody else is doing. You can pull them right off. It, I like to go on there and play with it, but it's-
Jo, is the healthcare still tied to it or not? They let that lapse, 80/20. Originally, the healthcare was tied to it, where we-
No, you're talking about-
They let that go, right?
Yes. So, yes, there were, there were all kinds of other things that we had to, to report on. It seems like every quarter, we had to have something in place. And if you missed one, you didn't, you've got no money that, that quarter. So they've gone down to just the budget portion of it and, and the dashboard.
Do you know what it stands for?
Which one?
CVTRS.
Yes, I have it on your city, village, township revenue sharing.
Thank you.
Yeah. I had a question, just that, and then you may not know the answer to this. I know, I'm looking at they calculate based on a 2010 census population, but they, but also censuses, censuses are done on a, what do you want to say? It's a 10-year, but they also do a bisensus, a bisensus within the five years. They don't make any adjustments?
No, they've used this for, since I've been here.
Wow.
They've used the 10. Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess when the next big census comes around, they'll, they'll use that one.
Community can pay for-
Yeah, yeah, because it's expensive.
10 grand. We did one.
Okay. Yeah, I did not, I did not know. I just know that these are the, the calculations I received right from the website. I pulled up the website to, to find out how they did the calculations to, you know, to kind of help you understand where the money is.
We're closer to 55 than 53.
And, yeah. And I do want to say also, as far as the revenue sharing and the amount, the numbers that we get from them, they are on a different fiscal year than we are. They, they run from October 1st through September 30th. So the, the numbers you see there include the amounts from previous, previous years. So it's always a moving target. So you'll never see that exact amount on our revenue, because I have to accrue some back because of our fiscal year. So there's always a, a little difference. So I just want to kind of point that out, that's, that's a moving target. I mean, we know the numbers. I just don't know what they are for the end of '18 right now. Any questions on how that comes up where I look? Okay, very good. So the expenditures. And I just have a couple of the major expenditures that we have. Our biggest expenditures, of course, are our wages. However, we have no increases on the wages due to contract negotiations. All the contracts are up. We did not put any into the budget for negotiation reasons. So when that, when we do negotiate, and we find out what those are, we will have to go back in and adjust that. So it's just something that, that we do. Our healthcare, we have budgeted at 15% increase. I do have to say yesterday that we did find out that we only have a 9.84% increase. So that will be adjusted in, back in the draft as we present each one of the funds. The vision in the dental, well, the vision, the disability, and the life insurance, there's no increase on that. We don't have an increase. There's a possibility that it will have a decrease or increase when the contract is up with each of those. That's end of August, so the end of '18. So we did not budget for those. So if we do get a major increase, we will have to come back with a budget amendment on that. So we did not put that in there. That's, because it's only a four-month period. Also, for their dental, we actually got a decrease, which I had to double check on that, a decrease of 6.57%. So that was good. All right, we're going to move into the pension and OPEB. Our MERS pension is for everyone that we have, our management and our teamsters and half-ski, anyone but FIRE. FIRE has their own separate pension. But our employer, employer portion, our annual required contribution decreased 6.4% from the amounts you see up there, the 639,372 in '17 to 598,188 in '18. The budget is staying the same as last year. We're used to that amount. That'll help us relieve our unfunded crude liability if we pay some more other, you know, on top of our ARC, our required contribution. So my recommendation was to leave it the same as it was, excuse me, last year. And that is a price for each of our employees at 11,064. And that is with everyone who was hired before January 1st of '14. If it's hired after that, that's a percentage for each person on their wages that we pay. The pension for FIRE, that increased 2.9%. That one went from 763,874 to 786,578. That, that one is funded at 87%. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say what we were funded in MERS. MERS is funded at 72%, and the FIRE is funded at 87%. I do want to say that we went to a MERS meeting. The state is talking about how to address pensions that are not funded above a certain percentage. We thought we might be in a little trouble. I didn't think so. But I think the amount that they're looking at now, because nothing is passed, is 60%. So we're well above the 60% for pension, and I believe for the OPEB, it's 40%. And we are just, we're a tad above that. So, so right now, that they're, the numbers that they're talking about is, we're, we're above those numbers. So, you know, that's, that's in.
What would the 28% number be if we were 100% funded? Would you know what that number would be?
I'm sorry?
We're 72% funded.
Yes.
What would that 28% equal in dollars? If we were to fund it at 100%?
I have the numbers. I have the numbers back on here for you.
Okay.
They're on the next page. That's a good question. So I did put those down for you to see exactly how much that we need to pay to get up to 100%. So I have those on the next page. But I did want to say the, the OPEB, the retirement healthcare, the general fund, this is the page that I actually had to update, because I had 17 numbers in there still. So for '18, the general fund had a decrease of 1.59%, and it's 44 and a half percent funded. And the FIRE had a decrease of 0.52%, and it's 41.7% funded. So both of us are above that 40% number that they're looking at as the amount at the state. So our next page, this is our MERS page. So this is right out of the actuarial report. It's page 21 of that report. Your unfunded liability, the amount that you would need in order to get to 100% stand, would be that 6 million, the column on the, on the far right side. That's 6,65,378 is what we're unfunded right now, dollar amount.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes, sir.
Because I should know these things, but in 2002, if I'm reading the chart right, we were 87% funded?
Yes.
So how do we drop to 72? We know we have to make a payment each year, correct?
Yes.
So how do we drop?
The, the annual required contribution is something that the actuaries will come up. But the reason we do drop is multiplier. I don't know when the multiplier was increased during negotiations. It was increased to three, I think a three multiplier on those. And then we had-
That's a FIRE.
That's FIRE. Oh, I'm sorry. That's not this one. Okay. Back off.
Just try.
Yes. Thank you for giving us great, I'm like, what's that? So I really, I'm, I'm not sure if we just have more people retiring. We had some early outs.
And I guess-
The assumptions?
The assumptions were different. Really, if you remember when she gave the audit report this time?
Yes.
She said that not, had nothing to do with anything that we did. It's just that they, they're just being much more conservative at the state level and the funding of CPA, whatever, who are making decisions because of all of-
Yes. So they lower the, they lower the interest rate from 8 to 7.75.
Age.
Age. They increased the age. The lifespan increased. And also, there was some smoothing method that they used, and that one, that one went from, I believe, 20 down to 10 years. So that's all going to make a difference in the calculations that you see from the actuary.
I think also, I know, that when it was 100% funded, no one contributed because it was 100% funded. And this was early in the 2000s. So I think if there's a lesson to be learned, you should always contribute to that, because it is market-driven, too, right?
It is. That's the big, the big, yeah, big issue.
So when the market, they had expected more return on the money, and the market did not produce.
Which leads into my next question. So would we expect to see this go upward since the markets are now at record highs?
We might. I don't think so, because it's a conservative investment, isn't it?
Right.
I, I don't, MERS gives us the amount, the dollar amount based on actuarial. So every year, they redo, yeah, two years behind.
Two years.
It's two years.
Yeah, because this is 16. You'll see 16 at the bottom here.
And, and I know it's not unique to us that we're behind. I, I guess I'm just asking a, a general question. Why, how do municipalities, whether it's township, cities, villages, how does anybody get behind? I think you've answered a little bit. But my follow-up would be on the retiree part. How does that get all the way down to 40%?
That one, we just started investing.
Right.
So, OPEB, yeah, the OPEB-
We just started a few years back, I know.
Yes.
Right.
So we've got a lot of catching up to do.
Okay.
Some people, even in the state, we learned that there's some municipalities that still pay as you go. They don't have anything. That's what the big issue right now at the state level is, is nobody has that.
And so should the state decide to go to 60%? Do we have a contingency to get there?
They're not looking at that. It's 40% for OPEB.
Right now?
Yes. That's, they're talking 40%.
For healthcare.
For healthcare. 60% for pension, 40%-
And you don't think the 40 will raise?
Ours, I believe ours will go up. The next-
You don't think the, the standard, you don't think the standard from the state is going to say you need more than 40?
I didn't get that feeling. We have the treasurer there that was talking, and they feel pretty confident that this number, they don't want to penalize everyone. They just want somebody to come up with a plan if, if they're not there. And, and we do have plans. You know, we were hitting our ARC, which is our annual required contribution. We make that every year. So you're taking baby steps. You know, we could always put more in, you know, could always put more in. But we, we are following the guidelines that are in place by the actuaries. And, and the actuaries actually are the ones who suggest the assumption changes as, as we, as we go along.
I guess that's why I was kind of headed. I mean, I, we just got some money that we paid down on Seaver property, correct? So if we were to get more, is this something that we could put the money towards?
Oh, yes. You could, they'll, yes, we could always put money in towards this.
Thank you.
And I, there were several communities that did not pay the ARC, which, the actuarial. So we, and we have always done that, except for when we were 100% funded. We didn't give any money towards-
There was no ARC at that point.
Right. So, but we should have, I mean, that's one thing I think, as you learn, a lot of communities have learned is-
With the, with the big decrease that 2008 hit, it really hurt everybody. Every pension it hurt. If they didn't have the smoothing, which is, they take the loss and they put it out through a 10-year period. If they didn't have that, we would have fallen way below the numbers you see here. They smoothed that out, because you can do that when you're an actuary. I am not an actuary, so I don't want, they're, they're calculations, they're a different breed. Their calculations are, they're, they're based on mathematic calculations, but I don't-
Right.
Yes. Yes, definitely. Right. Yeah, it would be nice to have that, and you wouldn't have to worry about it then. Okay, we'll go on to the next page. It's the firefighters' actuarial valuations and their unfunded liability. There's this at 1,826,564, and they are funded at 86%. And you can see what Brenda was talking about, where their funded ratios back in 2000, even in 2009, were at 104. And we didn't put any, we did not put any ARC on them. I'm sorry, I misspoke. The, the unfunded accrued liability is 4 million. It's the middle column. 4,513,659.
And so would this be because of the 3% multiplier kicking in?
That happened early.
That happened earlier. That, that was earlier, back when things were really good. What really hurt everyone was, was the downturn in 2008. That hurt everyone.
Stand this for verification. They actually, the last kind of negotiation, multiplier went to 3, down to 2.35. New employees, maybe hired 8 new firefighters in the last two years or so. The 3 percent multiplier was negotiated years ago. The one that was one of his grandfather, yeah, that enemy, they're pretty constant. The new employees, it's 2.35.
And this has that perpetual millage, so you always can levy to pay for your OPEB and your pension for our fire department. So at least, I mean, we have to get it funded to 100 percent.
Right. And at, at the levy that we have right now, that we approved at the 1.2, that is a little bit more than the ARC, so that we will be, all the tax levy that we bring in, the millages, the funds that we bring in, will go toward these. I'll break that up in a percentage, and it'll go. It won't be a lot, but it will be more than the ARC, the required contribution.
I have a question, just a quick one, sir. Okay. Okay. So, and you may not be able to answer this, but what happens in a situation if the economy takes another downturn? I know, going back towards Stan's question, the economy has been upturned, you know, for at least, I would probably say the last, what, three years, right? And from what I'm hearing, it takes two years to actually show that inside of these funds. But if the economy was to take a downturn in 2018, 2019, is that immediate show, or is it also delayed?
It's still delayed. I think the smoothing went from 10 years to five years, so they, they shortened that up.
Okay.
So it still is going to hit, and it will hit more speed.
And I know we, this board has always talked about getting things to 100 percent funded, and then still contributing to it to make sure to, for any downturns and huge thing. Because if you, you know, if you levy 1.2 mils, and it's worth a certain value today, if the value plummets like it did in 2008 through 2015, we lost 37 percent of our taxable value. So, but the thing about this much is you can raise the millage to pay for the ARC.
Exactly. For the, for the firefighters' pension and their OPEB. The next page is the, the OPEB. This is from an actuary report. We only get the actuary reports on these. We're required to do them every two years. So the last one we had was in 2015. So these numbers are old, but it does give us the ARCs for 2017 and '18. So I already had those. We will be getting another one in '17. So we'll see how that moves around. I think those numbers, the 40 percent, are going to be a little bit higher. I really, I honestly think they're going to be a little bit higher when we start to look at those.
Well, they changed the age and, like, they adjusted-
They changed the age, but I think that the funds were doing pretty well. So I think we'll see a little bit, maybe percent more.
So the numbers going across are general fund, 101 is general fund-
The court, yes, the general fund.
Then you have-
The court.
Yeah, you have the different-
Fire. Then we have environmental services.
Yes. I didn't know if you knew what that is.
Recreation. So those are, those are all there. So the fire is the only one that we kind of separate out. So that's what you're looking at when I say that 41 percent. But the next page, I actually kind of put them on one thing for you, so you can kind of take a look at them and see what the differences are between those funds that we do have the OPEB expenditures for. So in 2018, the budget we have there, it, those are actual numbers. Those are the ARC numbers that are required. And you can see over on the far right-hand column, the percentage change from '17 to '18. All of them are decreased. So the ARC decreased. But what I'd like to do is, again, keep the amount that we had put in last year, so that we are putting in a little bit more. Any questions on that? Okay. Then we're going to get into the debt. So this one, this one may be a little more complicated. This one is the debt funds that we do have. We have the LDFA fund, general obligation fund. We have bonds, we have two bonds, and then a capital improvement fund. The first one is a Fund 250, and that's our LDFA fund. This is based on capturing taxes. We only have the one district over where Bozal is at, Seaver Farms, and-
Does everyone know where Seaver?
Okay. So we collect a certain amount of taxes on that to pay for the infrastructure that we got bonds for. So, so this fund is actually just the collection of the LDFA, the tax from, actually, it's only one person right now, our one manufacturer. And so we, we have this fund set where the funds go into this account here. You can see the amount that we're going to be capturing for 2018 is $120,609. The actual expenditure is in Fund 2, or 398, and that whole expenditure is going to be the $231,600. And that's kind of why I've showed you here, because there's a shortfall. There's, there's not going to be enough to cover for that. So what I, what I'd like to do in our budget is we have, we're going to be moving the amount that we collect. We will move that $120,000 over to 398, Fund 398, to help pay for those, the principal, the interest, and there's some fees that are involved with that. So that's basically what this fund is for. We collect it in there, and then we'll move it out to actually pay the bond. The next fund is a, is a general obligation debt fund. This was set up, and I'm not sure if we've been using it properly. All I have been doing with it is putting funds in there and then taking them back out to pay the bonds. We don't collect anything in there. It's just basically sitting there. So I would request that we close this fund out. We don't, if, if we had set aside a certain amount of money each year, like, so much percentage from the general fund would go into here to pay any debt that we had. But we've never done that. So the fund doesn't make any sense to have a fund that really doesn't have production into it. There is a fund balance in there now of $5,196. It does earn a little bit of interest. I would like to close that out, just close that completely out, and put the money into the 397. That's our, our bond for our land, for the purchase of the land for the Seaver. So that would be my request. It's not a fund that really is needed any longer. Yes, sir.
I apologize. Can I go back to the LDFA first?
Yes.
You were just talking about paying off the land of the Seaver. That's different than the LDFA.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I thought it was a bigger amount that we targeted.
Yes. And those, those are in, so the 397 is for the land. That Fund 397 is the land bond. The 398 is for the infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Yeah. So we've got, we've got two bonds. And we got a smaller bond that we hope to pay off.
Right. Okay. Because I thought we directed a larger amount of money. Okay.
We did.
Thank you.
We did.
Thank you.
So we'll get, we'll get to those. So any questions on, on my suggestion or request to close out this Fund 301? All right. So the next one is the purchase of the land. This is the general obligation bonds. This is Fund 397. You can see the original amount of the bond. I've got some information in there for you. They re-marketed the bond back in '11. It reduced the interest rate, so that was really nice. We saved a little money there. Right now, that bond is, the principal on it is $720,000. So that's down quite a bit. This is the one we made the big lump sum, $330,000, last year. So we reduced it. You can see those principal reductions. There were several made. Actually, we made one in 2006 for $1,405,000, and then we made one in '07 for $1,600, or $1,060,000. And then the one we just made last year. So we're down to our principal being $720,000. You can see the schedule of debt that I have down here. This is what's scheduled to be paid. We're hoping that maybe we can pay the whole thing off. I do, however, right now, have a budgeted, I have budgeted for general fund to send this money over to this Fund 397 in order to pay that, because it doesn't have funds to pay it. So that is a request.
Joe, if I could just interrupt for a second. This is the one that if the $740,000 in the cell towers comes through, I'm sure I think it probably will, that they're doing their due diligence, and would then pretty much wipe out that, because the board already has, has already made that designation for that.
Right.
That's actually on my next page.
Oh, sorry.
But I did not put proposed. But I did not put proposed. I, I should have put proposed because it's not a finished deal. I should have put proposed on there. But I know we talked about this at, at one of the meetings, that we take those funds, and we take it, and we pay off this debt. This would be nice to pay this bond off. It would save us at least $33,000 in interest fees.
Right.
We pay it off early. So, and it also frees up this line of credit that we had to have, $626,000. We've got that sitting there. We've just had to keep it. We've also had to pay fees on that. We've always had to pay fees. So just like, to me, I hate giving money away for something like that. So I would like to just get that done and over with. If, if we do get the funds to pay this off, then I would definitely readjust what's coming from the general fund, unless we just deposit the incoming money to the general fund, and then I could just move it over as we have in the budget. So I have it budgeted that we're only moving the payment over. But I'll bring that back as a budget amendment when we actually have closure on this, and we know when we're getting the funds, and bring it back as a budget amendment. So you guys can see-
Do we have the money?
No. It's still in the works.
Or in the hand.
Okay. The next fund is the infrastructure. This is the bond-
May I go back to it for just a moment? I, I thought the motion was to allocate those funds to pay down that debt.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it was.
Did we have a motion, or was it just discussion?
Not a motion here. We put it in the motion.
Oh, excellent.
Right. You still have to do a budget amendment?
Yeah, I'll bring that back. It's always nice to bring it back so everybody knows what we're doing with such a large amount. I don't-
Yeah.
Yes.
You have to have a burning permit.
Yeah. It'd be really nice to have that out of the way. All right. So the, the infrastructure bond that we, that we acquired was for the, I guess, the infrastructure over at Bozal. This one is hand in hand with the next page, which is the infrastructure. This was for capital improvement. So what happened when we got the bond, we actually put the money in 498, and we used the funds there to pay out for all of the infrastructure. And the bond, the 398, was set aside for the payment of the bond. All right. So we no longer have a purpose for the capital improvement. There are some funds sitting in there. Actually, there's quite a bit of funds sitting in there, and they have been sitting in there. And I'll just keep on this page because it's going to refer back to what I want to request for 398. There are fund balance of $330,585 sitting in that account, just sitting. We didn't need to use all the funds. We finished the project under budget. I assume it was done before I got here. But that's been sitting there. And so what I'd like to do is just close this account out because we, there's no need for this any longer. And we put this toward the debt side, which is the Fund 398. So I'd just like to close that out. I do have to take that to the LDFA board because it is part of the LDFA. So they'd have to approve that as well as you guys approving it, too. So we have to have both boards approve it. So I'll be taking that to the board. I think we have an October meeting. Right. So we'd like to have a meeting before finalizing ours, so that you-
I was just looking it up.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, okay.
And once that's paid off, does that LDFA board cease to exist?
I do not know.
There wouldn't be a reason to have it at that point.
Well, the thing is, it's not going to be paid off.
No, I know, I know.
So we'll be collecting on this one-
From Bozal.
Till '29, 2029.
Okay.
So, yeah. But that's a good question. I'm-
Okay.
Is the capture of it? Right. And that includes-
So you're, you're right. Probably if you don't need it, once everything's paid off, you won't be collecting it any longer.
They're all captured. I don't know why I had to do that. Sure what that had to do with.
So I, so my suggestion, my suggestion and request would be to close this account out, this fund out, and put it over into 398. All right. And if you remember back when I was going over the 250, the Fund 250, LDFA, I told you I had a shortfall. So this will cover that shortfall. The shortfall was $110,991. So this will cover part of that. So we'll have maybe the two years before we'd have to have the general fund take money to help. Unless, unless we get some new manufacturers in there that we can collect the taxes for, which is what we hope. I mean, everything seems to be on the rise around here. So we can only hope that we'll have some more industry and restaurants and things that we can get a tax base from.
What changed the payment is the personal property tax. That's why-
We had, you gave, they had an IFT, so they have a-
We did, but that was 50 percent. We get zero. Or we get that. What do you call that acronym? They don't pay personal property now. See, that's what changed. Remember when they did the C Corporation, whatever, whatever, state?
And the seniors paid for it?
Yeah.
So that all affected, that, that has affected everything. So in the Fund 398, just get that really quickly, is a lot of words written there. Basically, it's just telling you what we had it for. We did a rewrite of this, this bond. It's not a rewrite.
New legislation?
No. We, we, it's something in 2013. We didn't remarket it. We rewrote it. Thank you very much. Just in 2013. And again, refunding, yes. So, so we saved some interest, we lowered the interest rate on that. So, but we will be paying payments on this through 2029. And we owe, as of, so, yeah, so-
2.2.
Yeah. That'll be after the end of, we'll be paying the principal in, in 2018, 2.2.
But that's primarily paid through, it's the LDFA.
It's supposed to be paid all by the LDFA.
Yet have.
Yeah, so far.
Yet have.
We don't ever have enough to pay the bill.
Yeah, we do. That's the other one.
Is this the one?
This, this infrastructure, the one for the land, we've had to pull from the general fund. This one is, is had enough. And we may, you know, I'd have to look, because we, we may have been last year a little bit-
This year is the worst it's been.
Yeah.
We had it in fund balance always, to pay the difference between what the LDFA paid and what we had in fund balance.
Right. The LDFA had some funds build up, so there was a, now, now there's a shortfall. So, so do we have any questions on- So, do we have any questions on the debt? Kind of what I wanted to go over today is just kind of how we came up with some of the numbers we did. Hope that makes it clear.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought it'd be helpful to understand that we've never, haven't done it this way in a long time. So some of the biggest changes is if we get the money from the cell tower and pay off that bond, then the $500,000 that we have budgeted for in the draft budget will not be there because it'll be paid off in 2017. So we might want to put it towards our pension or OPEB or. Joanne, thank you. I mean, Joanne, Joanne. Oh, I love Joanne.
Are you going to be coming back, Jo, on other budgets within it? So do you want us to save our questions then or send them to you ahead of time and Brenda?
Yes, trustee Eldridge.
Just ahead of time?
If you send them ahead of time, then I can address them and what I'll do is then I'll address them because if you have a question, probably everyone has one.
Right.
So I'll try to make sure that I cover that. I don't want to take up a lot of time, you know, on things that maybe no one needs to, you know, it's pretty clear, you know, but if it needs to be explained, then I would like to know so I could make sure that's in my presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in the next board meeting, we would like to do all of OCED, OCED and police, which includes ordinance and, yeah, well, it has building 248, 249, planning.
And the rental, Fund 248, 249.
Right, yeah.
The law enforcement fund, so.
So what we're basically going to do.
We'll cover about five or six of them.
Like my granddick's budgets. So do you think starting at five is good to do that for the?
I can start as early as you want to go.
And the thing the board, we're going to discuss, and it was mentioned in the police department, had two deputies for 2018. Since it's a draft budget, we can, we talk about it and then you give us clear direction. That's what you want. So the next, is there anything else? The next item is discussion for economic development consultant, professional services. And we have talked about this in the past and we used to have an economic development person on staff here, Jim Garten, that was years ago. So we know that we need something, you know, to, to help with economic development, to answer the calls that come in. It takes a lot of, a lot of time to, to try to figure out what to do with the person's request, whereas if we had someone that actually knows how to do what grants are available from Spark, you know, what do you, we need a position, we'd like to restore that position, but not do it in a way that is a full-time position with all the legacy costs and everything. So we would like to contract for services for that, for professional services. There's a gentleman that Karen and Larry and I met with, his name is Luke Bonner, and I'm not sure if you guys know who he is, but he was at Spark when they brought American Center for Mobility here. So he was one of the lead persons on doing that and he's very familiar with ACM. Something that he does that Spark does not do is retail development and recruiting and, you know, redevelopment of retail, which are your restaurants, clothing stores, your service, you know, we don't have, and Spark does not do that at all. And they, regardless how many times we have asked them to do it, they said that's not what they do. They do the technology. So what we would like to do is bring back a proposal from his firm and do a work session at the next meeting if the board's in support of it.
Madam Chair, so, and Carlisle-Wortman, they don't offer those services either?
They're the planners, yeah.
They don't have anybody in there on staff that does economic development?
I'm not sure if they do or not, but I know that Luke Bonner and his, he contracts out. So if he needs a social media person, he has access to that. If he needs to do a branding, and that's what, a lot of times what Carlisle does. But retail recruitment, like planning strategies and economic strategies, we use Carlisle-Wortman. But to actually go out and recruit and have someone that can take the calls for economic development calls, and we're getting a lot of them. A lot of interest has started to occur this year in different things that we're not even familiar with. We try to have meetings with them and, but we really do need to have a professional that can do that for us, that can go to trade shows and represent White Town for retail and, you know, he can do manufacturing. This firm has, he can, he has done it all.
He has a proven track record.
Yeah, he's worked with Taylor and did a lot of their retail, yeah, and which has changed dramatically. And the American Center for Mobility, he was the one person with John Ricolt, the third. So he kept pushing it and pushing it. He did all the legwork on it and helped it become a reality. He's a U of M graduate, so he has connections there.
I, I know Luke and I don't question his abilities. Is this something that we would bid out and have other people to make sure we're getting the right price and everything else rather than just giving it to one company? I know him, they're very good. That doesn't mean that there's other people out there where competition wouldn't get us a better price and a better service.
And you can do that on some professional services or not required to do that?
Right, no, I know we're not required.
Like our lawyer, our engineers and.
Yeah, again, I know him. He's good at what he does.
It's kind of, like, we had Carlisle-Wortman for our planners, which we refer our site plans to, and then we hired them to actually be on site because of a loss in employees. Like, we didn't bid that out. We just said that, you know, we're comfortable with him, but we, you can do that? It's a long process.
I guess my question would be, why wouldn't we do it?
I guess, I'm just thinking about it, one is putting together the whole process, oh, I'm sorry, putting together the whole process and stuff, and I think a lot of it has to do with relationships and trust of, you know, you know, like, we could end up with someone, but we don't know really anything about him. I think that part of the reason I know Brenda and Larry all like Luke is because we've known him for so long and I've seen the work that he's done. He is professional and whatever we agree upon, you know, it would be something, you know, we'd have loophole or language where either party could cancel at any time and he's ready to go. He's ready to hit the ground, you know, running. So I think on one side, just to develop that whole process is, you're talking about.
And we can do that. We can do short term and long term. Short term, we need someone, you know, but we can do a long-term process. I remember, I used to say the same thing and Bill Gagnon looked at me one time and he goes, "Do you get the cheapest brain surgeon? When you go out and look for a brain surgeon, you try to get the, the one you're comfortable with, the one you trust?" And I don't know if that's why professional services stand are allowed, you know, because most things for townships, anything over, is it $20,000? Requires bids.
I get all that and, okay. It's just something that we saw on this agenda, which obviously you guys have been speaking about. We do get a really good deal on a cheaper legal service. So in that case, we did do well. We did get a cheaper brain surgeon there.
But we didn't bid it out.
I understand, I understand. I'm just telling you, you guys have sat here and listened to residents before, asked why we don't bid things out.
Well, we don't want to do, we don't have to.
I'm just saying, how do we know this is the correct price that we're getting if we don't compare it against other competitors in the market? How do we know that's the right price?
We can get that. We can get comparables.
But another thing to, is you look at, I mean, one way I look at my head to justify it to say, is it fair, is, think of what it would cost if you had a full-time employee and what you'd pay for them, and we know what that was back. Oh, you're talking probably close to $200,000, $150,000, at least $150,000 a year by the time you figure pensions and benefits and healthcare and what you, you know, would have to pay them. I know one of the things, and whether it's Luke or somebody else, I know for me, I've wanted to do this even when we were in the recession and depression. So I'm excited about it, that we're at least talking about it, because I just thought even when things were bad, that was one thing we should have still made a priority to just, you know, but decisions had to be made and stuff. So the fact that we're talking about and going to, you know, think about how we're going to, you know, work in the area of economic development. And one of the things I remember asking Wallbridge, when we first started with Luke and all them to talk about ACM, and Luke was the brainchild behind this. I'm not sure that he's getting all the credit that he deserves, but him and young John, it was two young minds to actually, you know, that knew that autonomous was here and it's here to stay. But anyways, sitting around with Wallbridge and stuff, I think it was even before when we, when they were talking about, when they were talking about taking or demolishing the plant, that, so, because we're all time saying, why can't we get anything out here? Why can't we get things on E-course Road? We know we have the numbers. We know we have the income, discretionary income. Why can't we get, you know, any restaurants out here? You know, I love Leos and I love Aubrey's, you know, why can't we? Because, you know, all the data is there. And then when you meet with the restaurant people, they'll tell you that it's all done at those, those shows, those trade shows, and that you had to put together, you know, to get anything on this side of 94, we have to have a special brochure and marketing piece because when you do the big sweeps, the two and the three and four mile or 10 mile radius, what do we pick up? All the extremely low income from the city of Ypsilanti, and then that automatically makes them not go. That's why we couldn't even get Kroger's for a long time. And finally, I think it was through a connection, somebody knew somebody who knew somebody said, "Look, don't look at those numbers. Come out here. We're all either going all the way to Myers or we're going all the way to Belleville," you know, "to shop." And so, and that same thing happens to us on the restaurants. And so that's what Mr. Wallbridge.
Ricolt.
Ricolt, but, you know, the old man who's been in the business for a long time, you see the big signs, Wallbridge is everywhere. He said, "You have to go to the trade shows with all your parcels that are available, you know, with the, with all the, get all the work done for them because the restaurant folks send all their people, whether it's Panera's or whoever it is, to those trade shows and then they just, you know, a lot of us just going around and seeing what folks have." So I, you know, and as we look at, you know, Michigan, a lot of us say all the time, same thing on Michigan Ave, "Why does it stop at Canton?"
He agrees with that, yeah. But he doesn't, when he's questioning, then why would we select them?
I didn't ask for a full-time employee. I've known Luke for over 20 years longer than anybody sitting up here. He's a fine person. I don't question the quality. I'm just saying, did we look at comparables to make sure we're getting the best price for services? That's all I ask.
Well, Stan, and if I could respond, we can bring those to you or we cannot do it. We don't have to do it. I'm just saying, okay, Monica?
I'm sorry, yeah, I really would like to say, it is a good idea to do it. In fact, I would agree with Karen. We need it. We needed it when we were in bad times. We need it now when we're in better times. There's, there's a need for actual development on Michigan Ave, on E-course. There's a need for stores and retail in that area. It provides jobs for our residents inside of these, inside of these areas. There's a need to market Ypsilanti Township. If it's not being marketed, then basically, honestly, business is going to keep going to, yeah, Canton and, and Pittsfield and, and Arbor and everywhere else. Ypsilanti Township, you know, with the available land space that we have can be, can be and should be considered a economic development engine. We have, we have plenty of land space and we have the residents that can support by income businesses, small, medium, large, coming inside of the township and be able to thrive. But if we don't market this township, it will not come. And that's just plain and simple.
How do we get there? That's the, I think, I think if I heard Stan, he's, he agrees with doing it, just how do we get there and how do you choose? I know, that's what I'm saying. Okay, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, I understand what he's saying.
Right, I think, I think.
You can bring comparables.
Yeah, I think, I think to address Stan's, I guess, question and comment is that, you know, I can see if it's a contract, yeah, just want to make sure that we're getting the best.
Measurement.
The best, paying for the buck if you want to go there. I don't see where that necessarily is an issue, but I definitely agree that this is something that's needed and, and I, you know, as one board member with one voice, I would do, you know, want to keep that process going forward because we have got to move the township to, you know, the level where we can capture the businesses that are going elsewhere. They need to be here in Ypsilanti Township.
Madam Chair, how soon could we get Luke in here to give up some sort of a presentation? And how soon could we get some comparables for the services?
If the board was in, agreed to move forward, we were going to bring him to the next board.
Okay.
If everyone supported.
I support that.
Again, I'm okay with it. If you're going to bring him in to give a presentation on his, I think it's only fair you bring other companies in to give theirs rather than comparables.
Well, we can get you.
Looking at black and white numbers, there may be intangibles you could get. That's all I'm saying.
If, well, I, then I'm going to have to disagree with you for just a moment. Then we need a short term and a long term. Short term, we need to get someone on the ground working for Ypsil County Township as soon as possible. Long term, we can go through that, that process of interviewing everyone and having them, you know, different groups do different presentations, but we can get comparable, comparables on cost.
I guess I was just thinking, if we're going to meet again in November, it's plenty of time for a company to show interest. If they don't show interest, they don't come in. But if that's, if you'd rather move quicker, that's fine. I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Okay. So we'll bring it back to the next work session and bring some comparables. Monica?
Yeah, and maybe, you know, I don't know, I'm trying to bridge here. I definitely understand the need to get someone in, definitely. I also see trustee's Eldridge point in regards to making sure that we're, you know, being, I guess you could say prudent for long term. So yes, short term, yes, let's get someone in. Long term, maybe we can look at those bids and, and I don't know.
That's what I said, I think.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's a possibility.
I think that's what I said.
Okay.
Maybe it wasn't clear, but that's what I said, short term.
Yeah.
Bring him in, do a presentation, get it going. Long term, and maybe the trustees can lead and do the interviews and do the legwork on the different companies and, you know, and get involved in that process and lead it.
Yeah, sounds like an idea since it's coming up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, now we're reviewing the agenda, is that correct? My computer's down completely, it's dead.
We're up to review the agenda on the.
We're up to review the agenda on the work session. We have the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the work session and regular meeting. And I don't have my computer, but I think on the bids, we said it was approved contingent upon, this is to authorize a contract for the golf course, bike path, cart path. And I, I thought the board said contingent upon attorney approval and I did not see that.
Was it in the minutes?
No, but I'm not, I'm just, will you double check it to see?
Because I, even if it's not said, that's what we always do, but I think it was said.
Okay, and maybe.
I can't remember on the, on the path, pass itself.
Yeah, it's a, it was an authorization been awarded, I think it was some thousand, some thousand dollar contract.
Madam Chair, I will concur to that. I do remember it was contingent upon attorney approval.
Did you, was it in the minutes? I didn't see, it wasn't in the minutes. So if we, if the recording reflects that that's what we said, if we could add that part, that would be.
Jeff is here!
Jeff is here. Hi, Jeff. Yay. That's awesome. That's the only, um, comment that I-
It's not any, it's contingency on the budget amount. Yeah. So the contingency budget amount.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Um, general legal or statements and checks? I'm sorry. Are there any questions on statements and checks? General legal update? Mr. Winters?
I'll be here for the board.
Oh, Lord. Budget amendment 13. Um, right here.
Budget amendment number 13, um, is for total increase in the general fund of $77,000. And it's for, um, the court and prosecution, um, legal services for domestic bonds and prosecution. There's also a PTO payout of 32 hours for, um, I guess I got the wrong line name, two PTO payouts. Um, yeah, one's for $1,515 and one's for $1,585. Are you up? Another one is for a request for the community stabilization, the land bank, um, for $30,000. And those are specifically for, um, properties listed out of Oswego, Rover Road, Michigan Ave, Rubelet. No, that's not right. I'm wrong on that. It was for 2011.
What are you talking, what are you talking about?
$30,000 is just-
No, yeah. This is confusing, but, um, Giovanna can explain it. The audit, the auditor recommended that we do this, so.
Okay. Giovanna Neal, accounting director. So this budget amendment is actually a cleanup. Um, we had purchased property during three different years. So I think the first property that we purchased, the township purchased property, um, these are for three different years. There's quite a few properties. I listed them in here. What we had done was we put them in inventory because any type of asset that you get, that you're going to be selling, you put in inventory. This is an aged inventory at this point, uh, which means you basically have to write it off. Uh, so we need to expense these purchases. So when we bought them, we put them in a receivable, thinking that we were going to be selling them soon. However, it's not been soon. So it is best accounting practice to actually move those and expend them. Um, I would like to do that this year. And then any revenues that we have, when we sell them, will be recorded in the year that we do sell them. So it's just to clean up her accounts. I did list the properties and the amounts that we purchased them for. Does anyone have a question?
It's confusing, but we have to do it.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is, oh, wait, I'm sorry, I forgot old business. I'm so sorry. Um, request of Karen Wallen, human resources, for approval to create imposed election specialist position.
Madam Chair, point of information, um, would it be, for this old business, would it just be, uh, in order to just remove from table and then make a motion to, uh, send this agenda item to contract negotiations? Would that be, uh, order or, or, uh, okay, I guess?
I mean, the board, of course, could do that. I'm not discussing it at all because it should be an executive session based on what the township attorney said, so. It's, I'm afraid to discuss it, based on everything I've read.
All righty.
Other comment?
I would just like, I would like to-
Trustee Eldridge?
Go ahead.
My only one was going to be that the item that was actually tabled is different than the original one that came forward. Looks to be different in wording in certain places. So I'm not sure which one we tabled. The one in July or the one in August?
The information in the packet is different.
Right. So I'm not sure which one we tabled.
This under old business, oh, sorry, under old business, this is exact same wording that was on the agenda in July 18th when it was tabled. And then, and the meetings after, because the board had wanted more information, so I had provided some more information after that, but this is the same.
Well, you changed it too. You changed.
This is the same exact wording that was on-
The wording is the same, but the packet is totally different.
I included everything that was in the original one, and then we added some.
A lot.
Yeah. This is true.
Lot of information.
I would like, just from a housekeeping thing, to have the board at least move it from the table and say you won't want to do nothing if that's what you want to do and just, so we don't have to have it on the agenda every single time and end it. You know, if you don't want to take it, I don't, I respectfully, um, disagree because I think that we could refer it to HR to handle negotiations if that's what the parties want to do.
I was just going to say, I thought it was tabled to a special meeting to be called by the supervisor, but yet it keeps showing up.
It specifically was tabled for more information for, and it was for the special meeting, but in technically, it should have been postponed. You can only, you can't table, you table for a specific reason, like I need more information or I need more time, which is what the board said. You don't table, I think it's just semantics, you don't table to a specific meeting. You postpone it to that meeting. So it was kind of the actual verbiage that was given was in between, but I think the whole intent, and I could be wrong, everybody else was here, my thought the whole intent was to get more information and that people felt they were too rushed. And then they, and then I think Monica made the, I'm, I'm not sure, I might be wrong. I think people were concerned because we were really trying to, you know, get the position filled because of all the election equipment and everything. And I expressed a real need, which anyways, we're beyond that now, but, um, we're struggling with it, but we're getting through it. But anyways, to end up, let's just, you know, get the action, get the position posted and stuff. And then I think the special to the meeting, well, I guess it was Stan, I think, that made the special to the actual, we talked about special meeting, I think Stan actually made the motion to do it, which my understanding was to encourage it to move forward, not to not ever take action on it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, thanks. Um, I, um, yeah, I'm not, I guess, I, I, maybe it's a point of information, I'm almost like to the point of trustee Wilson, um, does it have to come off table in order for us to make a decision? Because it seems as if it needs to somehow come off of table. Um, and that's where I'm a little bit, I don't have clarity on that. Because otherwise than that, it seems like it's going to stay on the agenda, um, and, and be a casted old business item. I hope that question makes sense.
Nothing about this has made sense to me.
Okay.
Um, but I think, I mean, it, this is a pleasure of the board. This was handled wrong from the very, very beginning. And it, it is, the union sent a, an email to all of us saying they didn't want us to discuss it, that it would, the proper time is in negotiation. You know, it's just, so I feel like it's, it's where you want it to go. I just don't want to talk about it because we're supposed to do it based on everything I read, an executive session or the proper places with HR, you know. I, I'm just concerned about talking about it at this level. So if you wanted to refer it to HR, is that what I heard?
I guess, yeah, I guess my question, um, I guess I'm even confused, maybe I'm with trustee Eldridge, is I'm almost confused on the question, um, because it's been so long. But I guess here, here's where I'm, I'm coming from, I think. Um, okay, there's an agenda item that's shown in a memorandum, and I believe that is, was tabled, right? If it comes off the table and is voted on, I'm assuming it would be to vote it up or down, um, does that take it off of table?
I think it's a procedural question.
Yeah.
I mean, my thinking on it, and my understanding of Robert's rules, is that it's on the table because the board put it on the table. The board can take this off the table, and you have several ways to get rid of this. One is you can do nothing. When nothing's done, which we've done on several items before, then it won't be on the agenda next time. So it just dies for lack of action.
But nothing happened last time.
It was, it was, right now, this item in a ball is ta, is tabled. It's, you know, and you can't table, you can't table things to not have, you can't make a motion to postpone a vote or not to do nothing under Robert's rules. So just either let it, take it off the table and just let it die, or if you want to do something, you want to refer it to HR or let HR, whatever, or negotiations, as Jimmy said, you can do that too.
But it was tabled under, not the information that's in this board packet. It was tabled for the supervisor to call a special meeting. So how it ever got back on this agenda, I don't know. But you keep putting it on, and I don't want to mess up with the legal issues and the HR issues and the meetings you've had with the union. I mean, there's just a lot of issues surrounding this, and I don't want to violate any of the recommendations of the attorney, so.
Well, I, I mean, people don't want it, I mean, people don't, if they just want it to die and go away, I just feel like it's not my job, and, and I know that it was for a special meeting. But the whole intent and all that discussion that went around there wasn't to put it to a special meeting to never take action. That was never any of the discussion. And so when I, so when I was looking at it, I researched the Robert's rules and stuff and said that if, if that was the intent, which it's okay, if someone, if an item's on agenda and a board wants to say, "We don't want to talk about this now or never," they can say, "I want to postpone this indefinitely," or "I can postpone it to the next meeting," or "I can postpone it until someone calls a special meeting." But table, you can't table, you don't table item for that reason. You table item for specific cause. And this one was because people said that they wanted more information and stuff. So I don't, my, that's my thing. If, if folks want to say, if they don't want to vote on it and they want to say they're done with it, you know, and don't ever put this on here ever again, then that's the board's direction. I just didn't feel comfortable with saying that I alone should say, oh, that should take it off the table. That it should be, because the board put it on the table, so the board should take it off the table or decide what they want to do.
The board put it on a table until a special meeting is called by the supervisor. Now, to be honest with you, I don't remember that motion until I read it. So once I read that that was a direct motion by this board to do that, that was in the minutes, that's a motion.
But actually, it should have been ruled out of order because you can't do a tabling motion for, for that. And that's, you know, that was-
Unfortunately, it wasn't. And, um, the reason we don't call a special meeting is because the advice of the attorney too is that the appropriate place to discuss any of these issues in negotiations, that's what the union wanted, that's what, um, the attorney recommended. So there was no need to call a special meeting for that purpose.
And I certainly could be wrong. I'm just looking at Robert's rules on page 209, second to the last bullet, says there is no time, there is no set time for taking the matter up again.
Well, I don't know what motion you're under.
Um, Robert's rules, 209, lay on the table.
Lay on the table is different.
Okay. I just looked at it from, just looking quickly. I'm ready to move on.
So am I. You know, we do agree on that.
Mr. Winters, you don't want to talk about it, I know, unless it's in an executive session, correct?
I would just say what I did back in August. Anything I would say, I would prefer to say in the executive session, because I think back in August, I said that we had received a couple of emails from the chief steward as well as the staff.
Oh, your mic, Doug.
I would just say what I did back in August, that, uh, after the July meeting, we had received the two emails from the chief steward and the other gentleman from the staff of ASME Council 25. And anything that I would say, I would say in an executive session under the recognized exemption for labor negotiations, and I'll just leave it at that.
So no, just read it at this. Just go on.
Well, again, and I, it's been, I think the, what the supervisor, I mean, Clark Rowe was saying, I think that if the, it may very well have been that the word table was used as to postpone, but it seems like the spirit, letter, and intent of the action was to postpone it. So at that point in time, if there's a consensus, the board could just take it off the agenda, I think, and refer to the negotiations. That's what the spirit and intent of that action was.
And what are we referring?
All the issues surrounding this whole, this whole job classification issue. I mean, there's nothing that I have in front of me that would say exactly what the parameters are going to be in negotiations, beyond just the fact that's where, over our, this board's going to see any, any contract language or any new language at some point in time with this specific ASME contract. But to help move it forward, it's one, it'd be one pathway to go. Kind of a hybrid between what trustee Wilson and trustee Monica Roswell was saying and what all of you have been saying in different, in different ways. You know, all I'm saying is that if the true intent was to postpone it until a meeting was going to be called, and one has not been called, and if the intent, after that meeting to postpone it was in fact to refer it then to the negotiating, ASME contract umbrella discussions, that is probably the pathway you could take that would actually meet the spirit and intent of what you're trying to achieve. Otherwise, you can leave it alone, do nothing, or just simply, um, go down that one pathway that is kind of a hybrid between what all of you are saying except for the word table versus postpone, it sounds like. So, you ever take it off the table? Help the agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, uh, budget amendment 13, request of, then number two is request of Habitat for funds for the renovation of Wooddale and Jeff in the amount of $40,000, which is budgeted. And then we have the resolution 2017-23, which is establishment of the water subsidy income level. We had discussed it at, two weeks ago about adjusting this in light of the increases in the rates. I don't know if there's any questions on that, or?
Madam Chair, no, I'm sorry, no question, but, um, thank you for, uh, increasing that, I think it's $5, this is the least, um, for people that, you know, need assistance with their water bills, I think that's important.
Okay, thanks. And I know trustee Rowe had asked about, do we do that for like camera assessments and stuff like that? But if you, what I did learn is that if you qualify, under the poverty guidelines, the state of Michigan will reimburse your taxes, all but $350.
Does that include assessment?
I asked that question.
They're not the same as tax.
Oh, I don't know. They, well, the rule is if your tax bill is $1,700, they'll pay all but $350. So there is a, even, even if it's not the assessment, you get a huge return on your taxes that you pay. So I, I looked into that. It was a good question. The next item is for the rainbird irrigation software. Um, this is for the golf course. I don't know if there's any questions on that? My computer is failing me. Under authorization and bids, um, we have the request of Eric Copeland for, yeah, this is good, carpet at the fire station headquarters in the amount of $18,804.
Yes, good evening.
There's only one.
We only received one bid for this particular project, and this is to replace all of the carpet at our fire headquarters station and all the offices.
How did, was this, so, uh, maybe, and I could have missed it in August, was this off- authorized in August to go out for bids with it?
Yes.
And how was it advertised, Karen? I mean, I can't believe there's only one, I, not that I don't believe you, because I do believe you, it's hard to believe that there's only one bid for eighteen thousand dollars. But Lisa's saying as well as you, right? Mitten? So, um, what we, like, you should have sent it to people, companies, carpet companies, because not every company is a member of Mitten, which, which is the internet way of bidding. People do pay to be membership of that, but a lot of the small businesses, they are not members of M I T N, Mitten, I think it's called, right? And I know that there's tour three, four companies in Ypsilanti Township. There's one on Michigan Avenue, there's one on Hewitt, there, and then there's Home Depot and Lowe's, and, I, I mean, I don't know enough about the bids and how they went out. I didn't, was a square, when I read the, um, packet, it, it didn't have square footage either, so I don't even know what you're paying for eighteen thousand.
Well, the, the bid from Shamrock does, it is broken down into various rooms with the square footages. Uh, there was also a pre-bid meeting-
Meeting.
Uh, as part of the information packet, uh, so-
Like a walkthrough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I, I just, I, and I'm not blaming any, but I'm just saying, I just, it's hard to believe that there's not more than one company bidding on installing carpet. I just, I don't know. Unless, does other people have any experience with getting bids for, I know in my house, what I would do, but what's, what's this total square footage, Chief?
I can't get my old packet open. It came to the board on the nineteenth, was it on the nineteenth or fifteenth?
I'm just asking.
It was open on the fifteenth. I, I wasn't actually at the bid opening, I was in-
No, I mean, when it, the specs were put together, when they came to the board.
That would have been in August.
That's when I missed, yeah. But I, I, I would, I think we could get more bids by mailing the bids to companies in, you know, local, not you, the clerk's office.
Madam Chair, do you think we should, uh, at least, uh, rebid for at least the Ypsilanti Township, uh, or at least those, you know, in the local area, uh, carpet companies?
Yeah.
Just to see what they, they have interest?
I personally would like to see that happen, but I, Chief, I mean, this isn't a health and safety issue carpet, right?
This isn't a what issue?
Health and safety, or-
No, no.
It's not immediate.
No, it isn't, it isn't that, but it is in, in, we have a lot of freight and damaged carpet in the building issue, may have witnessed when you come through the building, yeah.
I, I can't find, can you open up your old one on the square footage? I know that the folks who were at the bid opening were very excited about the price, I don't-
The one person that submitted?
No, the, the firefighters that were there.
Well, the bid said twenty thousand, so you gave your bid out in the, right? You said it has to be under twenty thousand.
No, I, I don't usually divulge that kind of information.
What's that, honey?
I, I don't usually divulge that, what the, what is budgeted for the project.
I'm trying to get to it. Anyways. That's where I'm at, and, yes, trustee, um, Ross.
I guess, um, okay, yeah, I'm trying to find a bridge here, I, you know, as usual. Okay, so I can concur, um, with, uh, maybe, uh, trustee Wilson that says that, okay, well, if we rebid it, it should be only rebidded to Ypsilanti Township companies. Um, I guess my question is, is this, it also goes to the commercial, or is it commercial bids that can be bid it, uh, can only, can have one bid, or is required to have multiple bids? I don't know, that's why I'm asking that question.
Hey, you don't, you don't have to, but I don't understand why we don't.
Okay.
There's a lot of things I can see, it's specialty, and, you know, there's only one, but I don't understand why there's only one carpet person. I'm just, I don't get it. That's all I'm saying.
I, I did get inquiries from, uh, contractors, carpet contractors that called me about it, but for whatever reason, they didn't put a bid in.
Okay, they didn't put a bid in.
Yeah, they didn't put a bid in.
The entire, I'm going to find it, uh, the entire, um, package revision, this prevailing wage, all those kinds of stuff, and, pre-bid meeting, offering that, pricing, prevailing wage.
What did it say about pricing?
Says it has to be performance, theme of funds, prevailing wage, offering the inspection, all of them, and extra sales at the reward, and requires that, yeah. It's that. Remove illegally, get rid of all, disclose, I know the key parts that if they were, I don't give them, anyways, get rid of the old carpet, four copies needed, sell like raw room style carpet, similar to the one that you just seen, carromate, move the whole base, new vinyl transition, there's no bids, so, see, you can put it right in there, can't go above twenty thousand.
Exactly, you put that right in the bid.
Right, so projects show here, so maybe nobody could do it for twenty thousand. And I don't know.
Uh, Chief, I'm, sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes. Oh, we gotta go to the regular meeting.
Yeah, oh, okay, I guess we'll get to it later.
Okay. It's odd to me.
I know, key parts of the bid, we thought it was over, they could not believe the price that they got, so I don't know.
Well, the bid said under twenty thousand, like, you advertised it to say under twenty thousand. So I don't know why they couldn't believe it, under twenty. You know what I mean?
Well, maybe he thought it was going to be twenty, I don't know.
Okay. Sorry, Chief, I just-
So I'm, I'm just seeking authorization to move forward with the loan bidder in this project to install a carpet.
Okay, we're, we're gonna start the regular meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that, is that okay, yeah?
No, that's fine.
I'm sorry, honey.
Okay, no problem.
I just wanted to answer this question.